And then the following board meeting, then I'll give a kind of a quick little version or you can whoever wants to, but I can do.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of that's the presentation, but he'll be there at the budget meeting. And then. It's oh shoot, it's 46. Way up.
We have the. Is this for her?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we are.
Well, we're speaking to. Work. That's right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will read the district commission statement. Um, partnership with the community, the mission of the Dilworth Women Built School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so to become self-directed, responsible life among us. All of you got. Mike, uh, Don, Nicole, and Amy, but we do have four others present, we have Mr. Henderson and Mr. O'Keefe. Or Mr. Henson. On to number four, um, do you have any teach to the agenda? We do not. This is a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have some more? Motion by the to the second.
Second.
Second, five more. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. On to number five, public comments and rebel recognition. We do public comments, but the rebel recognition.
Well, it's awesome that we have Mr. O'Keefe and Mr. Hendrickson, maybe they have something that you guys would like to share from the middle school and high school.
I'd be honored, thank you. Yes, Kathy Martin was named speech coach of the year.
Awesome.
Again, for your third time.
Great, thank you. Homecoming went well, I think.
Yep, yep. Been here, not successful, been here, gone, and then.
Been here, gone.
This week, I think, at least for football, I think it's senior night or something, maybe Friday? Yes, well, probably not quite yet, but that'll be coming soon. Cross-country, I talked to Mr. Richards today, he said it's going really well for him.
Uh, Kedoff Riverwatch, our new program, they actually left today, it was their first, I think.
So today, yeah.
Excellent, yeah. All right, well, thank you. Uh, any more rebel recognition? Okay, on to number six reports, we'll start with six point one with the DGF middle school report.
I just got a few things that are, um, new this year for the middle school. Last year, uh, Anne Gifford and Ashley Evans, uh, wanted to kind of do a kind of an honors class for the science and social studies are working together. So they're gonna work on getting that, they're just starting to work the basic stuff, the terminologies and those type of things. But as we move into October now, they plan on bringing several speakers in, um, from lawyers, hopefully a judge and courthouse employees. And then between those classes, kids will be in science and then they'll go to, um, the social studies class, it'll be the same kids that are getting this. And, um, they'll be doing mock trials, they will do, um, some investigation of the crime scene and, uh, fingerprinting and doing all sorts of stuff with that. So excited to see how that goes, uh, they're doing a lot of work with it and ordering some different supplies out of the gifted and talented fund and stuff. So should be good, and I said, let's try it, see how it goes, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but we don't want to lose the try. So we're excited about giving them all of that. Um, eighth grade social studies, uh, um, we, our West Guard has been working on that, that outdoor classroom, I think you guys have been up to speed a little bit with that. The United Prairie Foundation, we got a $50,000 grant through that, and they're just starting classroom stuff, and they're collecting seeds out there and getting other classes involved. And part of that money will go for, um, five, 12 curriculum. And then they're also gonna help in, and Mr. Henson's probably got a lot more information on developing that acreage we have out there too for the classroom as well. So, um, she's very excited about that, she's done a lot of work to get that up and running as well. Um, social emotional learning, um, curriculum, be good people, we are starting that, uh, been working with our counselors on that, we have it set up. Each kid, each grade five through eight, we'll get it twice a month. Um, we identified classroom teachers in fifth grade, well, they do their own students, but, uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we've identified classroom teachers that will teach it in their classes. One time a month, and then the counselors will go in and rotate it amongst the other classes. So the students will get it twice a month with the social emotional learning curriculums. I think it's something that we needed and hopefully that goes well. It's a curriculum that kind of builds, elementary's doing the same one, so it builds all the way through, and then they can identify certain areas and can focus on those depending on the classroom needs as well. Um, conferences we have coming up, uh, last year, we did not do it with our seventh and eighth grade, but we are doing them again. And we will be doing them student-led conferences, which is something new, we did it with the sixth grade last year, and we're gonna expand that into the seventh and eighth grade as well. So, uh, students and parents will come in and the students will kind of lead the, lead the parents through what they're doing in each of the classes and stuff. Looking forward to see how that goes with seventh, eighth grade, it went really well with our sixth grade last year, so, um, that'll be a good change too. Um, Lake Agis, the special ed co-op, uh, some growing pains for all of us going with it, but it's been good and it's, it's new, it's different. So, you know, that's not how we used to do it type of thing, but we're getting through those things. Uh, they brought some good things to the table already, uh, one of the tools that we have, and the staff has, is the Edge climber. And it'll track all the data, and it's already imported, previous data from testing, attendance, tardies, discipline, all of that's on a one-stop shop, so to speak. So when we have a issue with a student for whatever reason, when we meet as our chat team, we can go look down, we can pull up that student and the profile in there, and we got all the information right there. So I think that's gonna be a very good tool down the road as we get into it, use it more, so. Um, lot of, a lot more opportunities that, uh, I think as we get going with Lake Agis, that we'll be able to access. We've already got, uh, at least one middle school student over in the interagency program too, where they can better meet the needs that we have right here, so. I think it's gonna be a good change for us, but like I said, we're just going through the early stages and the growing pains a little bit right now, so. But otherwise, that's been good, uh, start at the first round of observations, I've done all of our new teachers this year, so in the middle of that stuff, get that rolling, and then. Fifth grade, another change we made for fifth grade is the teachers are doing the fifth grade recess, which has been so far, so good. Uh, I don't think we've had a discipline issue with recess this year so far, so that's, that's also been a good change going forward. And then, um, the other thing is, uh, numbers are up, and the middle school, we're short lockers again, we have to get more lockers and space is very tight. It's a good problem to have because we have good numbers, but we don't have many extra room to navigate. So we've done some things with the learning area down there, and we're getting able to get dividers and utilize that space as well as possible. A good start to the school year, um, we just found out we're short a pair again, we had a resignation today, but other than that, it's been going well. Yeah, it's been a really good start, the students, staff, students, everything's been a good year so far.
When is the seventh and eighth grade conferences?
Fourteenth and fifteenth, October.
And then is it the same format where it's just, you know, six to eight, and you just.
The times.
You wait in the hallway to.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I think the first night we go from four to eight thirty, and then the second night it's like four to six thirty or something.
But those are student-led, and they're just walking?
Yeah, well, we're working on that right now, and, uh, sixth grade is getting their invites out because they have their advisory, so the advisory teachers will have them come. And then they'll talk about all the other classes with that one teacher. And seventh and eighth grade, we have our PLC meetings coming up, and we're still working how we wanna do that. So we talked about like having the fifth hour class now, they may, we may follow that same format, but, you know, I gotta, and I wanna talk to the math teacher. Why am I just meeting with the English teacher only, so we're kind of weighing how we wanna do that. We definitely want the students there, and we talked about, you know, mom and dad and students show up, uh, we're gonna give them some extra credit, or the student pays them. If mom and dad don't come, we don't want to penalize the student either, but if we can have the student do something that way to get them extra credit or whatever, we wouldn't want to get them in the building. And we want mom, dad, and student, and the teacher all the same, so everybody's hearing the same thing. Little Johnny goes home and has a different story, mom and dad talk to the teacher, there's a different story. I'm not in the classroom, they talk to me, my story might not be the same either, so it's nice to get them all on one roof. I'm excited to see how that goes, because it was very successful, I think, in the sixth grade last year. And I think once a kid takes some marches.
What is the fifth grade doing?
They do, like, they, they have scheduled with their teachers.
Oh, at same time though? They're like the same dates.
Yeah, 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 five, three, eight, all of them, it's two nights.
Any other questions for Mr. Hendrickson?
I've got a question on this honors side, science and social studies, it sounds awesome, just wondering, how do they select the students?
They went through test scores and, uh, teacher recommendation and looked at all that and, yeah.
And you said this is seventh and eighth grade?
This seventh grade is doing that.
Just seventh.
Science and social studies, we have Anne Gifford and Ashley Evans, they're team, kind of team teaching that together.
No, I think it sounds cool, I think it's kind of one of those.
Yeah, I don't know, honors is the right word for it, but it's kind of an advanced class, so they went through and looked at test scores and identified these kids. Attendance was a thing, they talked their previous year, looked at that.
No, I think it's a great way to expose them to careers early, you know.
I think it'll be good, and then, you know, cross-careers, science has something to do with social studies, you know?
Yeah.
So.
No, I see that sounds.
Since we go to that room, that's where we learn social studies, we go over here and we learn math, it all ties together, so excited to see how that goes.
Sounds really interesting, thank you for sharing.
They took, uh, they took the initiative on it and kind of run with it, they've done a great job, so, yeah, it's gonna be fun.
It's one of those things, I'm sorry, but, uh, it was nice visiting with both those staff members. They, like Kent's point, they brought it up, they were excited about it, they wanted to try it, um, and so it's like, perfect, let's feed that, right? The other part that I'm really happy to hear is, is the connection to community, hey, we're gonna bring some people in, we're gonna bring in a lawyer, we're gonna hopefully get a judge, we're gonna. That's the other part that we wanna do, right, connect our school to the community, so it's, it's awesome here.
And they were excited to try it, and they're, and we said, yeah, let's do it.
Yes.
I just have one more question, I already asked you, but I'm gonna ask it for the public. Um, can you talk about if the middle school does planners, like fifth or eighth grade, and if they do, why, why not?
We don't require them, uh, they're highly regarded, but I guess it's not mandated that they have to have. I know when we have a lot of meetings on students or something, they have organization problems, we highly recommend it, and we'll get them one if they need it, but we just don't require them. Some, some kids get very bad at that, and other kids, you know, I don't need to require them, and they don't have them, and they don't want them, and it's, I don't.
I know when we did Avid back, when that's huge, planners were huge with Avid and organization and having kids organize themselves rather than, rather than having adults organize it for them. So I was just curious where we were on that.
Now, I'll bring it up with our staff, maybe to see what the teachers think too, that's something that we wanna go back to or see in the future.
And I know the cost is always a thing, but we could maybe, if it ever comes back, we could brainstorm.
We get a lot of supplies, no, I mean, we have, I don't know, backpacks.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of, hey, there's some backpacks, we want, we need a planner or something, I mean, I think for example, we could do. Well, we have PLCs coming up, their teachers are coming up, and I'm gonna see where their thoughts are, so they're the ones that are applying.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. All right, on to six point two, DGF high school report, Mr. O'Keefe.
Shit, we're a little bit all over the place as well, because we've got a lot going on. Homecoming went well, so that was good, I'm glad it's gone, the phone policy that we've got in place was, uh, is actually going great. We did enough for our high school anyway, they can still have them, but yet they're not allowed in the classroom. And I've heard from several teachers that it has been kind of a game changer for them. So we still collect them in the high school office, that doesn't mean that everyone's following suit, but, um, the policy makes it a little bit easier for our staff to do what they need to do, so that was, that was a good change. The ALP currently, a little over twenty full-time students, we've got already twenty-four classes completed. That doesn't mean, you know, so of the twenty-some students, average, at least, you know, all of them have at least one class completed with three weeks, so that is great news. Um, it is alternative, so there's kind of some different seating, couch, a couple beanbag chairs, but I've gone in there at least once a day, if not twice a day. And they're, they're working, there's some, you know, maybe some music going on or whatever, but they're doing their things, they're being there with the kids, so that has been. We've, we've changed that up from last year, and we are, right now, seeing, uh, quite a bit of success, so that's kind of nice to see, we're helping the ones. Um, we're seeing a lot of students wanna come back and be part of that, if they qualify, so it's kind of good to see, um, that success rate right now.
Joe, do we have kids from other communities?
Not yet, we've actually kind of been able to feel amongst DGF that some that maybe had a year off that, hey, this would be, you know, I think I'd have more success trying this, well, let's try it. Um, we haven't had to reach out to the Hollies and Armsals yet to invite, uh, we certainly could, but right now, we're also having our kids that need credit recovery. So, for example, if Kent failed one class only, so he doesn't qualify, he's not credit deficient, but he needs to make up that class. The fourth hour, he might come down, do his work for credit recovery, fifth hour, he's back to doing whatever. So we can have upwards of about thirty-two in a class at a time because of those students, so we're, we're full. As of right now, so we haven't reached out, but that is always an option.
Are the true ALP kids still partial day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we do have several that actually take like a welding class or an A-class or something in the afternoon, so they go full-time. So we've got kind of a mixed bag of everything, but it's, it's going well. Uh, we went through, kind of with the tip-top stuff going on, we've gotten two fire drills out of the way and a lockdown drill to kind of educate the different kinds of, um, lockdowns, uh, that will be running. Um, Val's kind of taken charge in that, and so far, that's gone okay with what we've run around on the radios and checking doors to make sure that they were locked and talking to the ones that maybe forgot. So that's a, a work in progress, but for the first drill, it was, it actually went very well. Spent, we have a new hire started today, won't start seeing kids until Wednesday, um, but excited about that, because that's gonna relieve some of our case loads. Like Kent said, uh, with Lake Agis coming on board, to be perfectly honest with you, it is extremely overwhelming, just to be honest, there's emails coming out of whatever. I asked Kent earlier before this, okay, what is, what was that again, we're sending, what are we sending out, you know, what are we doing, what are they doing? And that takes time, we're three weeks into it, and we'll kind of get that dialed in. Um, but it's, it's nice and it's frustrating all at once until we actually get kind of clear parameters on, okay. And, and I understand that they wanna get a year, meet our kids, meet our staff, I mean, that's fair too, so we're just working with them. Conferences, much like the middle school, except the high school site team opted to go, one in October, open house, and then one in November, give another month, and then we'll invite those students in. I don't have the November date off the top of my head, but I just know that it's, it's split, we're gonna go one and one. Uh, observations, um, nothing formal yet, but I've been able to get in everybody's room, just do kind of a hot lap in there, talk to the staff, talk to the kids. Ninth graders, they always start out as a handful, give it a month, get to know them, get to know the personalities, create a relationship, we'll get them logged in. We've got a great partnership with Concordia, they will be first week in October, October. One of those concurrent meetings is Wednesday the second, I think October third, they're gonna bring A students that are in their teaching program. Our staff has reached out, let them know, and they are welcoming, welcoming them in. So any subject that they're gonna teach, or if they wanna meet a teacher during the prep, they wanna meet with me, just the ones that are, okay, this is the profession you're getting into. Let's get them immersed, here's what you can expect, here's what it's all about. Um, so Kent and I don't get emails from other principals saying, hey, my teacher made it a week, now I'm out. We wanna just make sure, hey, this is a very rewarding field, however, it's, you know, there's things that go into it, we just don't want any surprises. So the earlier the better, um, and in return, they're also, we also send kids over to go sit into their college classes too, so kids can kind of get a feel of what that's about. The last thing is, and I don't wanna get too deep into it, I've got a lot of feelers out there, trying to future-proof DGF. And what does that mean? That means looking at online options, which I don't know that we're gonna be able to get away from, so just looking at, um. How I wanna say this, but just having what it takes for DGF to have its own, I won't say online school, but online options. We, we get personality conflicts, we get, for whatever reason it is, um, and the statute works against us. So try to stay ahead of that, so we've got different options that make sense within our building. And, um, talked to a couple different people today, and just, I don't know, brain's always kind of spinning on, okay, if this, then that. But I think if we can stay ahead of something like this, we can contain it, so we don't get any surprises like some other districts have, and all of a sudden Shannon's scrambling, but. So, yeah, kind of, it's just three weeks in and it's controlled chaos, and it's, we're, I think we're going okay, but.
Any questions for Mr. O'Keefe?
I think that last point, Joe, it's, I think we've been seeing in over the last eight years, people having options. And, I mean, I think from the time that I was on the school board, we're starting to hear more kids like, well, I don't like that teacher, and I wanna take that class. So I, I applaud you guys for taking a look at that, because obviously we want, we don't want them to leave our school.
Right now, we've probably got five, but rather than leave our school, we've been able to corral them and do another option, so they are still.
Our student.
Yeah.
Yeah, our student, yeah. Because how does that work if they take a couple classes, are they?
For those, for that percentage of time, they're not our student, if, if they were gonna go on an outside.
So is their ADM split then?
Yeah, whatever percentage of that is.
Okay.
So that's like, Joe is, again, trying to future-proof or trying to protect us, like, okay, we have to understand the statute, so what parameters, we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do, what can he say, what can he say?
Yeah.
And so when you come up with option one, two, three, or at least one or two hopefully, so then you can corral and keep that care.
So if you came to Lindsay and you said, nope, I don't, like, I'm gonna go online, okay, you can, and we'll write a check or they'll deduct it from, or how about this? I've got this program in-house, it's legal.
Yeah.
It's supposed to.
Yeah, it's supposed to, yeah.
Keep them.
Well, I mean, people want options, so I mean, I guess.
Yep.
It's, like you said.
And it's, it's a good, yeah, at some point, let's develop our own, you know, our math teachers, our science, our English, okay, do we have our own curriculum developed? So if we need to, boom, we've got it where it's all, it remains in-house, and then, hey, this hour, you're off, but you're now running this portion of the month. So there's, it's, we're on it, but it's, yeah, it's, it's starting to become more and more, I heard about this, and I wanna do this because this, and it's like, hmm, let's do this, and.
At least providing other options for kids.
Yeah, yeah, trying to keep where everything's still in-house, and so far, so good, but there'll be a time where, eh, no, I'm gonna jump ship, and I don't want that.
Well, I think one other thing too, and I appreciate, so Joe and Wayne met with Concordia, I think maybe Wayne mentioned it, there is an elementary report too, I can't remember for sure, but. Um, Wayne and Joe both went there, and it's just nice because now we've created that connection where they're gonna come, their methods classes are coming out. And I also heard, uh, over the weekend, Concordia reached out to me, now they want their methods class to come and work with our kids in the elementary as interventionists. So they're gonna work alongside our interventionists, so we can even have that connection, which is, for us, it's a win-win, right? So hopefully, we can get some more staff in the future that are willing to come to us, and two, we can have our ratios with students even better, yeah, so. Yeah, so I appreciate that connection that's started, and it's good.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. All right, on to six point three, board committee reports.
Yeah.
Agis Education Co-op and table.
Yeah, we didn't like who's there, but he's not here, so.
Volatiles at the meeting. All right, on to six point four, superintendent.
Uh, all right, you see the first thing, and obviously on there is Brian, uh, passing away recently. Um, I did share with you guys last Friday, there is a local service in Thief River, uh, it's November eleventh is the visitation, I believe, and then twelve will be the actual memorial of the service. So I just wanted to make sure you guys know that, we can talk about that if anybody wants to go. Um, we have a staff member that's been asked to be a pallbearer, so, um, he talked to me today, and I said, I kind of figured that might happen, so. So just know that there'll be a few people affected by that, and then maybe even some of us can write together if, if that's, um, needed, so I just wanted to make sure. And I also wanted to just, so the public knows, Brian's served us here for ten years, and has passed, obviously, lived in Arizona, and Kathy has been in contact with many staff members here, so. Thinking of their family, I guess, at this time, so. Um, next thing is the audit update, the audit, uh, was all last week, but of course, it was before last week, and it's still going on, and Marcus is answering questions. Now they're working back in their office, but they spent the week, or I'm sorry, three days with us in-house, um, because they can be more productive, more efficient, and so that is done. Uh, as far as in-house, now they're, Marcus is kind of cleaning up some things. Uh, the preliminary is looking very positive, so as that finishes out, it will be cautiously optimistic, because until it's signed up, I always go, oh, oh, there's that thing, so. Anyway, so far, so good, and, uh, wanted to make sure I shared that. Uh, district leadership team, um, uh, kind of real time, because I met with students last week, I told students they didn't have to tell me until Wednesday, which is a couple days, I didn't wanna put it on right away. Uh, seven AM in the morning is not easy always for students, and it also for parents, but right now, I have eight new students in grades nine through twelve. Uh, seven new parents, and a couple of parents that are staying out from the past. Uh, our first meeting is Thursday morning in this room, and I know Laura and Brittany were a part of it in the past, I hope that still works. You know, maybe reorganization, it can change, but I was hoping you guys could still make that work, so, yeah. Awesome, so that'll be Thursday, so we'll introduce everybody, it's gonna be, uh, I mean, intro day for that meeting, but then we have, throughout the year, kind of scheduled already, what our topics, our main topics are gonna be. One thing I told the students is I wanna make sure their student voice, so every meeting, we're gonna have a time for them to share. If they have anything to share, if they don't share, if they do, great, let's hear it, and sometimes that can dominate the meeting, and that's okay, because it's really trying to help and serve them better, so. It's important to have their voice. Uh, foundation update, just so you know, this Wednesday night, uh, in this room also, they're gonna be voting on their officers, so that'll go official, uh, this Wednesday, so just keep you up to date on that. Um, Lakes Country Service Cooperative administrative forum, so I was just there last Wednesday, uh, most of the meeting was going over our levy sheets, so FY twenty-five levy sheets. Yeah, and it's, and it's good, our levy's gonna be up slightly, last year was down about four percent, uh, this year will be up about five, so over two years, a one percent, and that's kind of what it looks like right now. Uh, I'm still going through it to make sure that the state hasn't made any mistakes, uh, that happens pretty frequently. Um, so just going through that, um, with them, I'm trying to think what else, oh, I shared with you the MSBA sheet, the two thousand twenty-three K-12 appropriations analysis. Uh, Gary Lee is the, uh, deputy executive director there, he did this work, and I shared this with, I shared this with you, so it's a front back for you guys. Um, just to show you what happened and where the money is going. And then you can read it on your own, I just, it, it's important to see a discretionary, which means that the school can be using that fund, those funds as needed, it was six percent. Categoryal things went up thirty-five percent, grants, which we all have to apply for, and one of the frustrations is, and, and we're not a, I'll just say Lancaster, because that's where I was before. I didn't have staff in Lancaster to write grants, we don't have staff here, we're booked solid. And so without having that, so you put it on, at principals, you put it on directors, you put, I need you to write this grant, I need you to write this grant. The state has the funds, but you gotta jump through hoops to get it, right? You can see grants went up a hundred and sixty-seven percent. Non-K-12 revenue, and you can see up here, these are just a bunch of different appropriations, and these thing, this, a couple examples, MDE staff gets up some of that money, right? Because there's, there's new things they have to track. Lakes Country Service Cooperative added a number of staff to support the REED Act, to support categorical things. So those are the dollars spent under non-K revenue, which was a hundred and eight percent. And as our commissioner shared last week with us, Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Jen, hey, it's students first, we have to have a focus on students first. So when you look at this, you go, hey, was it, was the legislation students first? And I. And I, these are the questions that we're talking to our representatives and senators about. Great, you spent some money, but you can't do everything we want to do, right? Um, so anyway, I just want to make sure you see it, it's, uh, well, it's my responsibility to share those types of things with you, so I wanted to make sure I did. Um, last thing is recent social media threats, so, uh, if you noticed, I met with Tracy and Val last week.